Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Bukavich.
Here.
Berhalen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is the approval of the minutes of January 3rd, 2017.
Bukavich will make a motion to accept the minutes of January 3rd, 2017 as listed. Kerkowski, a second.
Vote call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Berhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Under public hearings, item four is a conditional use request submitted by Mike Youngerman Opus Development Company LLC for conditional use permit allowing a freight terminal on the property at 500 West Opus Drive in the 5th District. The city clerk will read the public hearing notice into the record.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Mike Youngerman Opus Development Company LLC for a conditional use permit allowing a freight terminal on the property at 500 West Opus Drive. The applicant is Mike Youngerman Opus Development Company LLC. The property owner is Opus North Corporation. There follows the legal description and the date of the notice is December 8th, 2016.
Doug Seymour.
Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And this is a public hearing and a request for a conditional use permit for a freight terminal with two 20,000 gallon underground fuel tanks as well as outdoor storage of dolly equipment for the property at 500 West Opus Drive. There will be a brief presentation as part of the public hearing, so I'm not going to get too much into details of the plan. We will go into that as part of the public hearing. And that site plan is included in your council report. We'll also have images for display at the public hearing. The property itself is zoned M1 manufacturing, but it's shown as planned industrial on the comprehensive plan future land use map. And this category, and I'm reading from that a little bit, includes high quality indoor manufacturing, assembly and storage, which is luxurious landscaping, high quality building design, and limited signage. All development in the planned industrial districts should comply with detailed site building signage and landscaping standards as described in the M1 zoning district. Again, the proposal for the freight terminal is such that it did require a traffic impact analysis by the city. And that was performed, and it would just be the staff's expectation that if this developer were to be approved, that any off-site, on or off-site improvements that are required of the TIA be a responsibility of the applicant. This site is part of TIFF 8, which is part of the Oakview Business Park, although there is no financial assistance being proposed for this, nor has any been requested. So it's just an important distinction. The proposed use of this site as a freight terminal is not unlike many of the other industrial sites in some of our business parks that involve a lot of truck traffic, and specifically distribution facilities that use loading docks. Really, the difference is in the size and the scope of the proposed use, the impacts upon the local transportation network, most notably the state highways, Howell Avenue and Ryan Road, and specifically at intersection, there'll be some impact, as identified by the TIA. There also may be some impact upon adjacent neighborhoods as traffic goes through them to get to the freeway, whether it's going to the north or to the south. So with that in mind, during the staff's initial review of that, we would have preferred to see development on the site which was a little bit less impactful and more consistent with some of the development that's taking place in the city's newer business parks in terms of aesthetics, the types of values that one could expect on a per acre basis, and kind of to minimize some of the outside storage. But we are nonetheless of the opinion that these impacts are manageable through the conditional use permit process should the council vote to grant that conditional use permit. Of note, the Plan Commission on a four to three vote did recommend that this conditional use permit not be approved. So what you have before you this evening is a, if you, after the public hearing, if you choose to be disposed to approve this conditional use permit, you would adopt the ordinance, which then would send it back to the Plan Commission for preparation of aesthetic conditions and restrictions. Remember, as part of a conditional use permit, you typically get a set of recommended conditions and restrictions from the Plan Commission. Since they didn't recommend approval of the particular use, there were no conditions and restrictions to forward, so if, again, if the council adopts the ordinance, it would be remanded back to the Plan Commission for preparation of conditions and restrictions. Finally, just a note with respect to fiscal impact, and I'm sure we'll go into it a little bit more, but the applicant has presented the appraised value of the development at $31.9 million. And the city's experience has been that oftentimes the construction value or the appraised value really does not equal the assessed value, although there's certainly going to be some correlation. Preliminary discussions with the assessor, the city's assessor, have indicated a projected value of approximately $12 million, which is more consistent with some of the freight terminals that we've seen both in Oak Creek and elsewhere in the region. So based on the city's most recent net tax rate, that includes all the taxing jurisdictions of 22, 25 per thousand, this development would be expected to generate 267,000, again, based on that 12 million figure, upwards to 709,000 if that 31.9 figure were actually to be the assessed value. So you can see there'll be a range in there, and somewhere in between will probably lie that assessed value. Again, the development is within TIFF 8, which includes the Oakview Business Park, but again, has not, is not receiving any financial assistance for this, nor have they requested any. And once the district is closed, this development would be expected to contribute between 79,000 and 210,000 in local taxes to the general fund on an annual basis. And the increment that is generated by this development, whether, for whatever value it's assessed, will assist in closing the TIFF 8 in as quick as manner as possible. So this is a public hearing, and what we're going to do is we're going to, the mayor's going to announce a public hearing. I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding this proposed use to please fill out a form, an appearance form, which we have available in the back room. Hand those in to the city clerk. Once the mayor calls your name, please then proceed to the podium to address your questions or your comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment. Actually, for the first call, I'm going to have the applicant make their presentation, then we'll take the forms that were brought up to me. If you haven't filled out a form, please do so. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Brian Randall, an attorney with Freebert, Finnerty &amp; St. John, 330 East Kilborn Avenue in Milwaukee. Here on behalf of the applicant and our development team, we have a slideshow that I understand everyone can see with the big screens and on the smaller screens. We have five people who are with the project team tonight. They don't all intend to speak. I don't imagine going 15 minutes, but I'd like to go through a short presentation to orient everyone, make sure everyone has the information. As usual, the staff has done a very comprehensive job hitting a number of different issues. We'll feed into that a little bit this evening, but we'll certainly be able to answer questions as they may come up after the public hearing. First thing is, you'll notice nowhere on our slide is Opus. Just by way of introductions, the legal notices, the property owner today is Opus. Michael Youngerman, never met him, but what this is about is a FedEx freight facility, a terminal. And so that's why we have Trina Murphy and James Winn from FedEx. They're sitting in the front row, and they'll be able to speak to any issues that might come up. From Fisher, on the developer side, we have Michael Bauer and Brian Rollins. So we have our full team who's here, and we'd like to talk a little bit about the specifics. The address, the site size, it's almost a 50 acre site. The building size, it'll be 115,000 square feet when we first open. It'll be expandable in a future phase. The doors, those are the number of loading doors, so the number of that is 158. And the jobs that we'll have will be 192 jobs at this facility, and we'll talk a little bit about the types of jobs shortly. The full buildout, when the second phase hits, will be 315 jobs as far as full and part time. And as Doug mentioned, the project cost, the construction cost, will be about 29 and a half million, $30 million, and we'll talk a little bit about valuation shortly. The next slide is simply to orient everyone to where the site is, on just north of Oakwood Road and west of Howell. Why don't you go to the next one with the aerial? We have essentially a wide open vacant field right now. There are some wetlands on site. We'll show those on the site plan as shown on this aerial. GE Healthcare is to the east, and the Yashkawa Americas at the hard corner of Howell and Oakwood. The traffic is going to come from Howell on the north, then west on Oakwood, and then north onto Opus Drive as it loops into our site. And again, the site is where that red dot is on there. And it is with the railroad tracks on the far west, and it's all zoned the M1. If you can go to the next one, please. Here's the site plan. Again, north being on the top. In the northwest corner, we have some wetlands that are present today, and we're going to work around those. We're preserving those. As well as, right in the middle of the site, you can see the wetlands are delineated, and again, we'll be able to work around those. There are some minor wetland mitigation measures that we'll have to take, but for the large part, those wetlands will stay intact as the natural resource. This is kind of the aerial shot looking to the northeast, coming from the southwest. And if you, and here's the other angle on that, just to give you kind of a perspective of what the operations are. At its core, that 115,000 square foot building is initially in an L, but ultimately it'll be in a T, and it has a number of those loading doors on all sides with an office. Mike, if you can show where that office is, right in the front on the far south side. Surrounded by parking areas, on the lower left side is where the truck tractors will be parking. We have trailers throughout the site, and then the employee vehicle parking lot is right next to the wetlands. And if, Mike, you can put your cursor over there. That's where the employee vehicles are. So we separate vehicles, cars, trucks, cars, pickup trucks, vans from the actual yard operations. And then on the far west side is where the service facility is, and Mike is taking the cursor right in that location, and another separate parking lot for some of the employee vehicles. On the far west side, and Mike, if you can go to the site plan to show that fire access lane, one of the things that we've added per the staff comments, and we understand the fire department was looking for emergency access, that is not a main access point. That's not where all of our traffic will be going. It'll all be coming through that Opus Drive, but that is a secondary emergency access that'll have either the breakaway gate or the key for the fire department to be able to use. And so that's the route where it will go around the retention pond, which is in the southwest corner where we will accommodate that on site. So that kind of orients everyone to what the overall site plan is. If you can go forward, Mike. And again, we can come back to any of these as needed. These are simply some renderings to kind of show that was the office side of things, where there will be management personnel, obviously some HR and other various logistics. This is a good one to pause at. Again, it's a site plan which really has the landscaping overlaid on that. This was not presented to the Plan Commission. We needed to work on those compliant requirements a little bit longer. We are mindful of the 30% open space requirement in the city code, and we've confirmed with the landscaper that this meets with that particular requirement. You can see we have perimeter landscaping so as to shield our parking lot areas from the residential properties to the south. We have landscaping interior to the site, which is important for stormwater and other absorption areas. And then, of course, we're taking advantage of the wetlands that are the natural resources on the site. The other thing to make note of is, in the lower left-hand corner where the stormwater pond is, there is landscaping as far as the first phase, but you can see grayed out where future pavement will be and future parking areas will be. That's part of that secondary phase. Just like, if, Mike, you can show where the building will extend in the secondary phase. The current Phase 1 building is in kind of the pink peach color, but that area where the cursor is, is where the expansion of the building will occur at the right time. So that's the site plan with some of the features, and if you can go forward, we will have some signage on Opus Drive, so everyone knows the drivers where to go. That's, again, a rendering of the perimeter landscaping, so we'll make sure that that is code compliant, and it gives us the excellent perimeter dressing that we will need. By way of a little bit more depth on jobs, the first phase, what we are going to build right off the bat, have 192 total jobs. That breaks down to a vast majority of full-time, 130 full-time, approximately 62 part-time. And the salary with that is over $7 million, and that does not include retirement. That does not include value of healthcare, health insurance, or other types of benefits. That's the pure salary amount paid to those 192 employees. The full phase, the full buildout, will then bring it up to over 315 jobs, 216 full-time, 99 part-time, and then the payroll will exceed $12 million, almost $13 million and greater. And again, that's just the payroll. We have a breakdown in a variety of jobs. These are not just minimum wage burger flipping jobs. The part-time pay is $17 to $18 an hour for someone who's looking for that flexible infill job on a part-time basis. Full-time pay, and these range from drivers to logistics people in the facility, as well as all types of other facility operations, $20 to $28 an hour. And then there are over a dozen, I believe, management-type employees which range from $60 to $100,000 a year in their salary. So a wide variety of good-paying jobs going into that $7 million plus in the first phase. One of the issues that we've heard about, and certainly Alderman Gale, was very good to make sure we were aware of the traffic and had our routes mapped out, and we can talk a little bit more in depth. First thing, though, that I like to do is really quantify what we're talking about. And we have essentially two types of traffic that'll come to this facility. Number one is FedEx trucks, and number two are the employees. First off, we're only going to have FedEx trucks. This is not a logistics facility where all sorts of vehicles are going to come and go. It's not like a grocery store where the bread truck comes, the soda delivery truck comes, the beer truck, and you don't really know where they're all coming from. This will be all FedEx vehicles, FedEx employees driving these trucks. And on the first phase, we'll have 382 per day, 191 in, 191 out. That does match up by design, again, because, again, these are all FedEx. They're coming, and then they're going. They're swapping the trailers, they're loading and moving along. Full-phase numbers are then shown, but the employee vehicles, and those are those who are coming to their job on site, that, again, breaks down to, with the numbers of employees that we showed, about 304 in the Phase 1, with 152 in, 152 out in the full phase. The peak hours of the facility, when these trips are really going to be generated, are between typical business day hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There's minimal traffic in the overnight hours. There is activity primarily inside during the overnight hours. It is a 24-hour facility, but the peak hours of that travel is during the business day. And so certainly, by way of noise or other impacts, it's going to be not out of what people are accustomed to. And the numbers, and if you can go to the next slide, this, that one just simply, again, confirms the drivers are the FedEx employees. We did do a traffic study. I don't want to dwell on that, other than certainly concur with staff that it does outline whatever recommendations might be required in the future we'll be able to comply with. But it also quantifies for us that, as I showed with the number of trips where at the 300 trucks and the 300 employees, our traffic study assumed 1,500 just as a manual number. And with that number, which is way more than what we'll have, we should be good through the year 2027. So it's a long road out there for when other improvements might be needed, but we will plug in in an acceptable way, especially accounting for other surrounding development. The Ryan Road interchange, which is where our truck traffic will go, we're going to comply with all no trucking signs and posted requirements there. So that means we're all going to go up to Ryan Road to get on the highway, and that has 21,700 daily trips, and that's the 2015 numbers. And so we're going to add 600 of that to that number, and the capacity, as our traffic study showed, can handle that. Go to the next one, please. The investment value, just touch on this again. It's a $30 million construction, so that's what we're investing into the facility. When the full buildout is implemented, we'll be up to 32, 35 million. The appraised value, which is different than the assessed value, but we have an appraisal because as part of our due diligence and what this facility would actually be valued at in the private sector, it comes in at about $32 million, so even a little bit more than the investment in construction. And we recognize that that is a different number than what the assessor can do with. Sometimes the assessments lag behind what the market value is, but nonetheless, this will be a very good market value by which maybe some of those other comparables, those other freight facilities, can be measured against what ours is, admittedly a brand-new one. But we believe we're bringing great value to the city, and whatever the assessor can do with that after we're built is to the city's benefit. As far as any additional information, I just want to touch on a couple of these. The property has been for sale. It's, I'm certain, attracted various interests over time. It's tucked away from the main thoroughfare, and that's really why we were attracted to it. So it may not be good for all of the other types of users out there, but for us, where we like to be able to screen it with landscaping and be somewhat secluded, it really works well for us. We are not seeking any TIFF incentives. We learned throughout this that we are in the TIFF district, but this is really an add to the increment. Whatever that district needs, whatever it called for, we are putting into, and we are not asking for anything out. And in that regard, the third, right in the middle, I think, is worth noting. We are at our expense, well over $100,000, and it's probably going to be a quarter of a million. We're going to be putting in a water main redundant loop through our site that connects to other water mains. We are going to reroute a sanitary line that goes right through the middle of the site, so that our building's not over that. And we're going to do the final asphalt lift on Opus Drive. Again, that's at our expense and something we're doing as part of the project without looking to the city to do that or without asking for the TIFF to do that. We're going to be able to comply with all the project recommendations by staff. We've already started to do that with landscaping, and certainly we recognize the next step is a very detailed conditions and restrictions level, and so we'll be working with staff and meeting all of those. If you can go to the next one, which is the final site plan again. So if there are questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We'll listen to, I know there are a number of registered speakers. We appreciate your time tonight and look forward to bringing an exciting project to the City of Oak Creek.
Thank you, Brian. I think I'll hold the questions from the council until we actually move to the discussion in item number five. But I have several, more than several, appearance request forms. I'll consider that the first call. This will be the second call for public comment. The first one was from Jim, hopefully I'm saying this right, McDonough. He did not wish to speak, but would like to follow in comment publicly read. Is Opus, and it's really two questions, or one question, is Opus going to try to buy any of the houses? Question mark. And then they tried, they went after our houses once before. I'll let you respond once we get to the discussion. So the first comment is from Al Leicher. On up.
Hi. I've lived there, adjoining that property. I probably have the most frontage facing that property.
For the record, can you state your name and address? Thanks.
574 West Oakwood.
Thank you.
It's right at the end of the Opus Drive there. And I've expected it to be developed at some point. I was expecting more of a type of development that was originally planned, light industrial. So I'd like to go on record as saying I'm not in favor of this. It's going to be a lot of noise, a lot of dirt, a lot of smell. And I don't think a lot of the people that are even a half mile from there are even aware of what's going on here. And I don't think they'll be happy if they find out. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next up is Tom Miller.
I'm Tom Miller from 320 West Oakwood Road. I encourage you to do what your Plan Commission did, which was to vote this down by a four to three vote. Purely and simply, and I'm reading a letter now I previously sent to the council members and the mayor, purely and simply, a truck terminal that is that big and expects 382 trips a day at the start and more later should be located along the interstate where it would not bother anybody. With coming in and out of Oakwood, trucks are not at all quiet when they accelerate from any stop sign or any place where they had to slow down. I already hear some of this from the two large buildings that have been constructed over the years, and multiplying that by a few hundred more would be frightful. Even if the terminal would be required to have significant vegetated buffering, as the city development department said, and as the lawyer said, that does not offer a lot of protection from in and out noise and truck lights and property lights at night, especially in the winter with the trees bare. I can already see the streetlights through my woods. And they're high, of course, but there'll be many more light issues. Many of these trucks, I believe, will be double trailers, and that increases the physical traffic issues, too, turning off of Howell onto Oakwood and vice versa. I would not want to be at the stoplight in that very sharp turn lane trying to go north on Howell behind three of these trucks because you probably couldn't even get through it at one stoplight. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next up is Joe Sandin, or Sandine. You're welcome.
My name is Joe Sandine, and I live at 414 West Oakwood Road. My husband and I bought that house as our very first house, and we've lived there for 50 years. As a cancer survivor, I'm very concerned about the health impacts of a gargantuan project like this. At the first stage, there would be a truck leaving or arriving every 3 minutes and 42 seconds. That means, that's on a 24-hour basis, not just condensed to the 10 hours of primary traffic. That's going to generate a huge amount of diesel particulate matter, which is a known carcinogen and which also contributes to both heart disease and respiratory problems. The present proposal would put that facility with those idling trucks in the midst of residential areas. There is no way that the wind could blow, that it would not blow diesel particulate matter in great quantities toward residents where families live. As someone who fought to keep a sludge dump from the present site of Oakview Business Park, I'm also concerned that a facility of this size generating this much traffic would discourage some of the businesses and industries that we want to attract to that facility. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. And next is Arden Degner.
Arden Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Ave. You have a synopsis of my testimony at the Plan Commission on page one of the Plan Commission minutes, if you'll turn to that. I just, again, want to reiterate that this is just the start of taxpayer-funded road repair. Just imagine the wear on Howell Avenue in addition to the sand and salt that must be spread. This, as I have mentioned at the Plan Commission, this type of a development has a short life. Just take a look at Lake Navnall. Not only that, but you should, this has to be denied. This is not part of a community that we grew up in to have this kind of motor vehicle traffic already. Just take a look at, what is it, item 12? We're already spending a quarter of a million dollars on a vacuum truck to clean the streets to conform to the state requirements. Just think how much our poor taxpayers, what we must pay of our pockets to allow this kind of thing. This has to be denied.
Thank you for your comments. That was the second call. This will be the third and final call for public comment, and item number four. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing. We'll move to item five, which is a discussion and consideration of ordinance number 2837. It would approve a conditional use permit for a freight terminal with two 20,000 gallon underground fuel tanks as well as outdoor dolly storage for the property at 500 West Opus Drive in the 5th District. We'll open it up to the council for questions. I see Alderman Bukavich has pressed his button.
Well, I guess I'll start. I am part of planning, and I think I was even chairing the particular meeting back in November when this came across on the four-three vote. We had a very spirited debate, a lot of discussions as to the pros and cons of what was going on with this particular development. Obviously, the Plan Commission's very sensitive to the neighbors. I don't think anybody's discounting. You will be impacted, or is without a doubt you will be impacted. And this is in my estimation. How do we... How do we best limit the impact, work together to make something, whether it's this or anything else, work? It's currently zoned M1 for industrial, okay? Not necessarily light industrial, could be heavy industrial, could be plate steel factory going in there, could be a number of things that go 24/7 with loading yards and things of that nature, impacting sound, noise, various things of that nature. So as I look at it on the particular uses, and this is what really affected my vote, I was in favor of this at plant commission, is how do we best control this? Now, in my estimation, we're better off supporting this and putting it in and controlling it through conditions and restrictions through our plant commission because it's already zoned M1. Somebody can come in there, basically anything within the M1 ordinance put in and planning absolutely doesn't have any control over what they're going to do. So you could have a thing such as, I'll just use something that I've experienced in my work life, say a steel yard that's hauling billets of steel or coils of steel. They could be moving them constantly throughout the yards on forklifts with backup lifts, alarms, things of that nature with a lighted yard to move freight in and out. Now, the traffic, again, where the real count lies, I'm not sure, okay? We put 1,500 in the traffic analysis and I believe the engineers to be true to that. I also believe FedEx to know their business very well because they schedule it. It's privately run company. They have to know what their counts are. And we're looking at, at peak, 300 and some trips a day in and out, okay? How is that going to impact Howell Avenue? Howell Avenue can hold that up to 2027, according to our traffic analysis. So traffic-wise, road-wise, I think we're okay. I stated at plant commission, Oakwood Road, I don't know when it'll happen, but I would suspect it is not going to stay a two-lane road. Somewhere in the near future, it'll probably look something similar to what Drexel Avenue became, which is a four-lane road. Now, again, not discounting the impact, but I think we can limit the impact through the planning process, along with our planning department in planning and working with the applicant to be the least impactful to the neighbors out there. Again, the property's been sitting 15 years. If, I guess Opus owns it, if they wanted to, they could sell it to anybody with an M1 use. Again, we'd have very little control based on our ordinances as to what would go in there. So with that, I'll leave that discussion to the rest of the council. But that was my line of thinking in it. Again, I think we do have better control through conditions and restrictions going through the plant commission with this particular applicant versus going by our ordinance allowing anything in there.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kukocowski?
Thank you. So from my perspective, and I sat on plant commission with Dan as well, and we had very many similar likes, but I was opposed to this from the standpoint that I feel that this is a wrong place for this in the city. I feel it should be more along the lines of potentially 13th Street. And I bring this to the forefront because I feel that the traffic, while Howell Avenue can handle it and Opus can handle it, once we get to the interstate, interchange has not been completed or fixed yet. So the state is kind of, you know, holding us up on that. Now, we'll say that, well, that's a state issue. Well, it is and it isn't because it becomes our issue when we have potentially many issues with trying to get on or off these on and off ramps. So that's where it concerns me and that runs right through the heart of my district. So that's where my concern is on the traffic. In terms of the location on Oakwood, I do agree with Dan that if there were going to be any use for this area, this would potentially be a good candidate, but I just didn't think this is the area for it. So I do think FedEx would be a great corporate partner, just not there.
Thank you, Alderman. Other comments or questions? Alderman Kukocowski?
I am not on the planning commission, so I, when it came into this agenda item with an open mind, I had an opportunity to read the minutes from the plant commission in our agenda tonight. I had an opportunity to meet with the representatives from FedEx. And all of the concerns and questions that I had were addressed and to my satisfaction. One of the residents talked about the left turn going from Oakwood on, north on Howell. I brought that up in my meeting because it seems like when the state reconfigured that intersection, that left turn lane going from south Howell onto east, going east bound on Oakwood, the curbs, the concrete, the pole, I'm really surprised nobody hasn't taken out that light pole yet because of, it's unlike Drexel and Howell where you have that nice sweeping turn to go, to go south or north or whichever way. You really got to go out and hang a quick left. So I brought that to the attention of FedEx and they're going to take a look at that and they assured me that their drivers would acclimate themselves to making sure they don't have any issues. Now, that's not to say something won't happen, but at least they were aware of it. We also talked about potential noise and the fact that none of the, none of the big tractor-trailer trucks there that you see in this PowerPoint program have any backup alarms on them. So it's, they're driving through the property and they are just backing up to their trailers and they are, you know, they come in, they go, whatever, they do their job. There's one, they call it a pup truck or some little, it's not street legal, it's just you probably seen just a cab with an engine and a weight of trailers. It does have a backup alarm and I was told that they have it turned down as far as they legally can have. And Alderman Bukiewicz mentioned to me that's about 85 decibels, car horn is near 100. So it's, I suggested to them that they take a look at any potential noise ordinance issues with regards to having this pup truck running at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning when they're staging their trailers for pickup. By the way, according to their estimate, they have one city departure at between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning and then 27 road departures between 7:00 PM and 10:00 PM. So I asked about noise and I was told that the way that the building is configured, you have about 700 feet between the side of the building where the trucks are on and the trees and the residences on the south side. So that potentially could be a decent noise, natural noise barrier with the building and the trees. If you look, if you have access to the minutes from the plant commission meeting, what really struck me as interesting is that Carl, it says here on page three at the top, Carl Rudabush, owner of the company that is responsible for putting in the due diligence for his client and involved in the project, stated that the original project had three buildings on it and would have generated more truck traffic than this particular project, which lends credence to what Alderman Bukiewicz said, that you could have somebody come in there and build a, some metal stamping plant. And that, that doesn't interest me at all. But you got a company that is going to come into a TIF district, not ask for any city money, and they're going to do all these infrastructure repairs with the sewers and all the other items they talked about. You know, that is something that if a company came in and wanted TIF assistance, you know, that's something the city was, could be potentially on the hook for. So here's a company that's going to come in and do the final overlay, they're going to reroute some sewers, they're going to do water mains, they're going to, they're going to do this on their dime and they're not going to ask for any city money, any city help, which is a rarity. And the fact that this place has been on the market for over 15 years, you know, if you say no, then you have what, another potential 15 years of it just sitting, sitting around? Or you have somebody who wants to come in and develop it, bring in additional jobs into the city, bring in money that will immediately go to the TIF district to retire it early. That's a good thing. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Brian, any comment on the, or response to the resident who asked the question about the purchase of homes along Oakwood Road?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Happy to answer that question. We do not intend to purchase any of those homes. Our site, our project can work with the 48 acres that we have. I think what Opus may have been doing or done in the past, and again, we're not representing Opus, they're selling the land to us, but as we're hearing Alderman Kukocowski and others that at one time, nine buildings, nine separate parcels could have been put on this 48 acres, maybe three were proposed and separate buildings, separate operators, separate trucking, different things were in the mix for Opus. And they've been trying to sell this site either in pieces or totally. And it may have been, as many developers look at, how else could we assemble parcels to make a bigger site or to work better with those neighborhoods? I know there's a cemetery right on the hard corner and there certainly are a lot of these residences, but we do not propose to buy anyone's homes and we believe that the way we can work our site plan with that dense tree line, frankly, that's something that I think one of the residents pointed to that we really view as a great asset, that that tree line can help be a buffer both in the winter with the dense hardwood right now, but in the summer, then you have Opus Drive, then you have our landscaping, and then you have even our building that will shield half of the operations on the north side. So it's something that we can work with on those neighbors continuing to exist.
Thank you for that response. Alderman Verhelen?
Yes, I think that Alderman Kukocowski and Alderman Bukiewicz pretty much hit on a lot of the things, but just to reiterate, the type of company that FedEx is, I mean, they're a longstanding, good, solid company. They bring good jobs to the city. We've had a lot of retail entities come into this venue around City Hall here. A lot of those jobs don't pay big money. So I'm kind of looking forward to not only the jobs that the company could bring to the community, but other families and stuff as well to maybe kick our housing market in gear a little bit here because we've been kind of lagging behind in that a little bit. As Alderman Kukocowski stated, no request for any city funds here. And again, another point that Mr. Kukocowski brought up, property's been on the market for 15 years. And I did mention when I met with the, with the people from FedEx, that, you know, there's going to be a lot of industrial property on the market here in the next probably five to 10 years in our area, all up and down the freeway, both sides. One particular spot that comes to mind, there's over 300 acres that's going to be developed into office warehouse on Highway K and the freeway, and that's going to be online pretty quick. Franklin's talking about expanding on 27th Street and Elm Road. And where this property is situated, it's been on the market a long time, doesn't have the best exposure, and not that we should take anything that comes along to, just to sell a property, but for all intents and purposes, this thing could sit around for a long time when all these other properties come online, just for the reason that Mr. Kukocowski stated, that, you know, we'd like to see this along the expressway, but, you know, just think of all of the properties that will be available along the freeway and this thing might be something that isn't as desirable. And I think with FedEx being there as well, we could maybe see more interest in our Oakview area generated just because FedEx is there, easy to ship product out, easy to move your product to the freeway and off to wherever. But I think this is, this is not the best use for the property, but I look around Oak Creek and I've sat on the council a long time and some of my colleagues have been here as long as I have or longer. And it seems that no matter what you put in any neighborhood, if there's impact, it's always, the number one question is traffic. And no matter where we put a facility like this in Oak Creek, I think that that thing is going to rear its head again. So if we put it on 13th Street, anywhere on 13th Street, in one of our other industrial parks where they'd maybe have to travel on one of our city roads for a distance to get to the freeway, traffic is always going to be an issue. So I think that's something we have to take into account as well. But I think for what we're seeing here, like I said, a good, solid company and I think they'll do a good job with conforming to any conditions, restrictions we put in front of them. And I think they'll be a good neighbor and it's something that's going to be here quite a long time. It's not something that's going to be in business for two or three years and leave again. So in my opinion, I think it's something that we should really look into.
Thank you. Any other? Alderman, Tom?
I need a little bit of clarification here on the assessed value situation, okay? I'm a little foggy on it, to be honest with you. Applicants in the 30 million range and cities in the 12, what's going on with that?
Well, it's very typical that when someone builds a building, their construction costs, which are legitimate, and they do not always add up to the assessed value. Assessed value is based on a number of factors, of which the construction cost is one of them, but it's, there's comparable sales, there's a number of methods that are used for that. And in many cases, our experience has shown us that those assessed values don't always equate towards those construction values. And in fact, when the proposal was brought for us with the appraised value that they're showing us of $31 million, we did talk to our assessor and we said, given the parameters that we know about the size and the scope of this project, how do you see that, the value of that potentially ending up? Based on his experience, and he's done assessing for a number of different communities in southeast Wisconsin, and again, this is just kind of, I don't want to say back of the envelope, but it's informed estimate, he places the value at somewhere around $12 million. Could that go higher? Certainly. It's just based on the facts that we have today, that's what his professional estimate is of the value.
Can I hear the applicant's response to that? Why you're at the 30 figure?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to respond. It's really not different than what Doug said. The facts are, are what we have is the current assessment today of $2 million for a vacant land site. And the other fact is that we're going to spend $30 million to build the building and we also, it just so happens that the appraisal we have really coincides with that. It's also going to be valued at $30 million based on the quality of the construction and the value of the lease, FedEx's rent payments. That's why the appraisal also is about $30 million. The fact that no one has tonight available is what the assessed value will be. And I appreciate staff doing the due diligence, and this is on a conditional use permit application of all things. It's not really a financing package that's before you and otherwise, but I think it's a relevant issue to look at. Staff on the conditional use application looked at what might the assessment be, and as we're hearing from the assessor, $12 million is what maybe they could do based on the market and how Wisconsin law works with assessments. What our belief is on that is, look at that $12 million and the other fact of $2 million is today's value. That's a $10 million growth in increment, which is valuable to the city or this TID district, when especially we're not asking for anything to come out of. So we're feeding into the TIF district $10 million of increment, at least with the assessor's estimated number. The other fact that I think that will breed is that we will be a comparable value that the assessor can use for our facility, the value of our lease, the type of construction, to then look at other like-kind or similar facilities that may have a lower value that ties the assessor's hands today, requires the assessor to only give us a $12 million assessment, and maybe it will serve as the justification to raise other assessments or other correct versions of how these types of facilities should be viewed in the assessor's eyes. But we can't control that today. All we can do is build a $30 million facility and invite the assessor to then assess us.
Basically in agreement with it, 30 million figure that it would play out to the 12 assessment?
We can't disagree with that. I haven't talked to the assessor myself, but I trust that that's what the assessor and how they do it, and that's typical. My home in Wauwatosa on the assessment every year has a certain number. I really believe fair market value, my house is more value. I hope everybody in this house, in this room has that for their home. That's typical. In this case, when we're looking at the millions of dollars, apparently it translates to a 30 to 12. I think though it is just as important to look at the growth of what we all know today is a $2 million assessment, what that could realize for the district and ultimately for the general fund when it goes back on the tax rolls.
Now, does that number include the build-out, phase two, or would that be inclusive of?
Oh, what part he was looking at?
I do not know the answer to that. Is full?
Right.
Including phase two?
Our phase two... Right. Our Phase Two number goes up to almost $35 million of the appraised value, so I would expect the assessment would rise to, again, using this estimated made-up $12 million number, pick a number, 14 million.
Okay, all right, okay.
And I guess just as a note to that, I mean, the assessment will be what the assessment will be, but having said that, certainly the applicant's due diligence and estimate and good faith estimate and projection of a much higher value certainly is some basis for examining what improvements there are, and certainly, I mean, if it does come in higher than $12 million, I think that'd be a benefit. We just don't want to take a number at face value and say, oh, it's $30 million, and then when it's assessed at 12 or 13 or 14, well, I think we just got sold down the road on this thing, because we just want to make sure that everyone's got the best information that we can give you.
All right, thank you. I've got one other question.
Go ahead.
Could we bring up that overhead map again? I'd like to see the setback. Okay. From the residential areas, what kind of setbacks are we dealing with here?
Well, if by setback...
What's the distance between the houses and the...
Residential property.
Right. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you can, with your cursor show, we were looking at the back of the houses where the tree line really starts, and going to the north to our building itself, is that the 700-foot measurement?
Seven hundred.
So, that's 750 feet from the tree line on the south to our building is 750 feet, and as I mentioned in an earlier comment, of course, the way our building is laid out, half of the operations are even on the north side of that, so the building would shield things to the south. But moving from through that tree line, which is very thick, as Mr. Miller, I think, pointed out, you can't really see the streetlights even today with the leaves down, so the trees are very thick. That's a great asset to their properties, and it's a great screening that will be maintained by virtue of, no reason that we're changing that. Then you get to Opus Drive, and our site on the southeast corner does sit rather low. It's about two and a half or three feet low, and so as our landscaping is implemented in that location, we'll have some lower portions of the site that will be benefited with some screening, and then as you go even farther north, the distance of the number of feet plus the screening that we have is how the noise really mitigates in those areas. So, that's what our distance is to those residential neighbors.
All of that wooded area is controlled by the individual homeowners, correct?
It's private property. Everything a foot south of Opus Drive is their property, private property. I think there are eight or 12 individuals.
Good, thanks. Resident had a question. Come up to the podium, please. You have to come up to the podium. Thank you.
I'm Miller, again, from 320 West Oakwood Road. I said, in the winter, you could see the streetlights, and I fear you'll see a lot of other things in the winter.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Alderman Gail?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate all my, the comments from my colleagues here. I want to reach out and thank the residents from the area for being in touch and being proactive on this particular project. I know it's impactful for your neighborhood and in my district. I appreciate your follow-up and your outreach on that. I really look at this thing, and I'm really not inclined to move forward on this from basically two standpoints. I think we've already gone over the fairly obvious, you know, the 24-hour operation, the noise, the light impact, the large equipment, we're interner roads. Joe cited the health concerns she has for the neighborhoods and the, obviously, the particular matter she cited in her commentary. Those are obviously very major concerns for essentially a project that will impact what is typically a significantly residential part of the city. Obviously, we've tended to focus our commercial activity in the west and north quadrant of the city, down our neck of the woods. For whatever reason, when this was laid out, this was zone manufacturing M1, but, you know, we've created, you know, instant conflicts when we have those kind of zonings up against residential districts, and we have hearings like this, not all that regularly, but oftentimes, this is what comes when you have these kind of conflicts that are built into our overlay plans, and here we are. So, neither here nor there, but the other side of that coin, you know, given we have these operational issues that I just find it's a burden for this project. More than that, it's just, I think the project as a whole, globally speaking, it's the wrong place for this project. This is the kind of, and you can see it, if you drive around, you'll see where these things typically go. This is a freeway, in close proximity to a freeway, close proximity to the airport. These are not built into, tucked into big fields and residential-type neighborhoods. And when it comes to that, you know, 48-acre greenfield development sites are not all that common anymore. I mean, we've talked about this in our strategic planning exercises and our discussions on planning, so we need to really focus moving forward, given the activity we've had, that we need to really look at these resources and in the future make sure that we're going to have opportunities to actually do something with land and actually can have vacant land to maximize value for the city and for our residents. So, I really look at that utilization, you know, settling for something just because they show up and have good plan, you know, there's something to be said for that, that, you know, it is taxable, obviously. But if we settled for the first thing that showed up, this site, 85 acres, we'd have a movie complex or a cold storage facility. If we didn't actually say, wait, let's take a look at this and think about it a little harder. So, you know, the IKEA site, going to create a man's value over there if we'd have let that decade it had been parkland for eternity. But we were proactive, thought about it, found a better use, and we're going to realize some significant value out of that decision. So, from that standpoint, really, that's where I'm coming from. I really, I think, more so, or not more so, but equally, we should not be just settling because they're here now. Commercial property holders like Opus coming into communities that have zoning laws in the books realize what they're getting into. And this particular use and this particular property has a special zoning restriction and needs a special approval. So, it has restrictions built in it for a reason. Terminals, trucking terminals in this particular use get a second look for a good reason, because they're not often, you know, in concert with the local residential kind of feeling and vibe of a neighborhood. We've had a little discussion on the valuation, the assessment, you know, the commercial assessments, that's what the world you guys live in, we realize that, that's where you're going to play. Just looking at, you know, in the area, you know, we've discussed this in our meetings, that for whatever reason, these projects, you know, locally, the ones that exist, at least the peer group that you can look at, don't appear to hold, you know, their value. We have a 12 million assessed value potentially at full build-out here. We've got, you know, Compton in the neighborhood, you know, I looked at Milwaukee County's land use database here today just to refresh my memory on some of these parcels, and you can look at the UPS parcel down at the end of Sixth Street, 48 acres, nearly identical in size. I have all in a number of doors here. There is a, there is a lot of doors and a lot of trucks in this property. 48 acres valued at $6.8 million. That's the UPS property. Yellow freight over on Ross and Howell, another freight terminal, 57 acres, give or take, valued at $4.5 million. A freight terminal just north of College Avenue in Milwaukee, 29 acres, $5 million. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect, and unfortunately, a lot of disconnect over commercial value of a property with a strong lease and the assessed value, which is going to be related to the tax base from these kind of projects, which may give some pause to, you know, how you think about these kind of things. Job-wise, we have to be a little careful about looking at jobs, at least initially, because this is relocating about, I recall, two-thirds of these initial jobs are going to come in from a facility locally, so they're not new jobs. Think about that a little heavier. So, as we move forward, you know, obviously, that, you know, we don't have a local income tax. You know, you can't mandate they live in Oak Creek, so, you know, job-wise, it's a nice number, but actual impact in the city, hard to put a finger on. So, from that standpoint, I'm on the ballpark, I'm, I think, better place for this project somewhere else in the city. This is not the right spot.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Can I...
Alderman Toman?
Is there a follow-up again? What was the assessed on the UPS?
Off the McCamlass website, yeah, 48 acres, $6.84, $6,848,900.
We're taking a site of comparable size, and we're going to get twice the assessment off of it? Is that pretty accurate?
That is at full build-out in Ballpark.
Did you have a comment, Doug?
My only comment was that, I mean, the age of the facilities, there's going to be some depreciation based on that, but I think it does call to the spotlight the difference between perceived values, construction values, and actual assessed values, something we're very concerned with, not only on the manufacturing side, but if you've read the articles in the paper over the weekend on the retail side as well.
Anything else, Alderman?
I've got one more question.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Yeah, the question I would have, and I don't know if it can even be answered accurately, but in the last probably 15 to 18 years, there's been two or three different entities that were in the buildings along Howell Avenue across from the subdivisions, next to Yasko. Staples was in there, GE Medical's in there, was Rockwell for a while now. We've got Suzie's Cheesecakes and another company there, Joy Global, I think, is in the big warehouses. But in all the years that those buildings were there, and maybe Doug could answer this, but I would venture to say that noise, traffic-wise, headlights, you know, from trucks coming in and out of there, not as great a volume, of course, but I would venture to say maybe a handful of complaints from the neighbors living right along Howell Avenue. And as well, when Staples was in, in back of Yasko, all the delivery vans and semi-trailers and stuff were coming in and out of there from that facility, and I don't know if the police department had issues with trucks going the wrong way on Oakwood Road or noise complaints or anything with that venue there. And we have to remember that when Oakview was developed out, just the spec building that's being built there now has got 30 freight doors in it. So, if we have 10 or 12 more buildings in that Oakview Business Park, there's going to be a lot of truck traffic and employee traffic generated out of those businesses as well. So, just something to think about. Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, from a higher density, you know, Suzie's Cheesecake is $7 million of value on 17 acres. Thinking in the global, you'd kind of like the whole area to look something like that if you had your brothers. I would, but, you know, I kind of said before that, you know, based on kind of how this thing is situated, Ken, I think it's, and like I said before, there's going to be a lot more of these type of properties going to be on the market up and down the freeway from here, probably to Highway 50 in the next five to 10 years, and this one is going to get all the more harder to market. And even though it's not the best value, you know, if we get a 12 to 14 million dollar value out of it versus letting it sit empty for another 10 years and getting a one and a half million dollar value out of it, you know, you've got to look at that as end of the equation, too. The opportunity cost, though, is you fill it up at something, you're never going to take it back up. You've got 30 acres of pavement. Look at what we had, the problem we had here, we have pavement on the parking lot here. It's immediately a hazardous waste underneath it. So, once you build it, it's there. It's not going away.
All right. Anybody else on this question? Doug?
Just a quick response to that. I think from the perspective of neighbor issues, I think the Alderman for the district, and Chris, I understand you're an Alderman all the life of that business park, but you'd probably be in a better position to answer that. However, I will say that the only real issue that staff has made aware of are some stray trucks. If you recall that when this development, initially, the Opus development went in, and with the Oakview development, there was a restriction on westbound truck traffic on Oakwood Road. And I have heard of instances where there has been, there have some trucks that either were not aware of that or ignored that. I mean, the only kind of anecdotal evidence I'll suggest is that, given that all of the drivers will be FedEx drivers and not, you know, people who are making their one and only trip to this facility from who knows where, I think that they're probably in a better position to minimize those incursions upon the West Oakwood Road properties.
One last thing, Mayor.
Alderman Bukiewicz?
I just want to make a point. Some of the Aldermen brought up some very good points, and again, we can go back and forth on the value and cost of waiting and everything like that, but think about it, the cost of waiting right now is $10 million a year assessed values for the citizens or property of Oak Creek. So, if we don't, if we don't get anything in there for five years at $10 million, the cost of waiting, $50 million to cost to this city. That employees, that helps pay down the TIF, that helps employ police, take care of our roads, improve our schools. Again, I think Alderman Verhaelen made a great point. As 27th Street, probably not 27th, but 13th, the freeway starts to accelerate, this property becomes less and less desirable. If it was such a hit for that, it probably would have been gone within the last 15 years, because Opus is a pretty aggressive company that way. So, I'll leave it at that. And again, I don't like to base this on money and cost. I'm more about controlling this through partnership, something we can control, because the M1, within the ordinances, we'd have nothing to say, again. So, thank you.
Motion on five.
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2837, approving a conditional use permit for a freight terminal with two 20,000-gallon underground fuel tanks as well as outdoor dolly storage for the property at 500 West Opus Drive.
Verhaelen, a second. All right, call the role, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Given the motion that's on the floor, part of that motion be to refer the matter to the Plan Commission to prepare and approve conditions and restrictions, and to direct that this matter be referred back to the Common Council for its meeting of either February 20th or March 7th for a revision to this ordinance number 2837 to incorporate the conditions and restrictions.
I'd like to amend the ordinance as stated by the City Attorney.
I can converse.
I would just pick the Common Council date. I apologize. I put both dates in, February 20th or March 7th.
March 7th.
Applicant notes March 7th. Have the City Attorney restated?
The motion that has been seconded, that has been made and seconded then would be to adopt ordinance number 2837, approving a conditional use permit for a freight terminal with two 20,000-gallon underground fuel tanks as well as outdoor dolly storage for the property at 500 West Opus Drive, and to refer the matter to the Plan Commission to prepare and approve conditions and restrictions, and to direct that this matter be referred back to the Common Council for its meeting of March 7, 2017, for a revision to ordinance number 2837 to incorporate those conditions and restrictions. Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
No.
Uzi?
Oh.
Alderman Krikowski?
Aye.
Bukiewicz?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving to old business. Item six is a consideration of resolution number 11781-010317, acknowledging and filing the 2017 calendar year salary grade plan and benefits for library personnel. This item was held on January 13, 2017. And who is speaking to this one?
Jill's here.
Where's Jill? There she is. Just grab the table there. Make sure the mic's on.
This is just because the library staff is, are not included in the general employee salary ordinance, this is the resolution to approve the wages for library employees for 2017.
Thanks for the clarification. Any questions or comments from the council? Deputy City Clerk has a comment?
I just want to confirm, or at least let the council know, when this was brought forward earlier in the year, there was one change that has been made to it, and that's why it does say revise. The only change that was made was, there was a change to the title of one of the employees, and they didn't catch that with the and they didn't catch that with the first, um, submission. So we did change that and corrected it. That's why it says revised. That's the only thing.
Thanks, Krista.
Thanks for that extra clarification. Uh, no other questions or comments. City Administrator?
Just so the councils are aware, you, you'll recall the library, you, you asked to hold this. The library board hasn't approved this, uh, per your direction, so I think we're good procedurally.
Yes, the library board approved it earlier this evening.
All right, perfect.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Kurkowski.
I think I could extrapolate this comment to make it fit under the agenda that, uh, we, we wish to, um, compensate our employees at the library for the work that they do. And I simply wanna say, my son came home from Whitewater, he went over there to use, to do homework, and he came back, he said, wow. So, you know, pay our employees well if we have a good, nice, nice library over there.
Thank you very much.
No other comments, uh, motion?
Guzikowski makes a motion to accept resolution number one-one-seven-eight-one-dash-zero-one-zero-three-one-seven, acknowledging and filing the two thousand seventeen calendar year salary grade plan and benefits for the library, uh, personnel.
Jill seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
All right, item nine is a consideration of a motion to approve music license agreements with SESAC, Society of European. Oh, I'm, I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry. Long day. Uh, item seven is a consideration of ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-eight, amending ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-six, fixing the salary ranges and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year two thousand seventeen. Becky?
Good evening, Becky Shermer, Human Resources Manager for the City of Oak Creek. Um, ordinance two-eight-three-six was approved with all of the non-represented salaries. However, the fire and police management positions were withheld from that original ordinance. So tonight, the Personnel Committee did, um, approve and recommend the attached ordinance number two-eight-three-eight with the fire and police management staff. You'll notice that there is an additional column, um, we added on the EMT pay for the fire management staff as well as the gun allowance for the police management staff to give you a total compensation column, which was important to the Personnel Committee. Um, also, the majority, the fire management staff received the point seven percent increase, the same as all the other non-represented staff. As far as police, um, the police chief received a point seven-seven percent increase so that the total compensation for both the police chief and the fire chief could be equivalent. And then the lieutenants and sergeants received a one-point-five percent increase, which is equivalent to what the, um, represented police employees received this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comment from the Chair Personnel?
Just to, uh, just to tell you that there was some confusion in the first two meetings. That's why we, we pulled part of that ordinance out for, um, for police and fire staff. Um, I, I sat in on a meeting with Andrew and Becky, uh, last week, and we kinda ironed out those numbers. The confusion was they weren't in black and white in front of us, and we could see them. Becky fixed that, and I appreciate your work on that. Personnel Committee's on the same page, all three of us, it was unanimous.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or additional comments? Motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-eight, amending ordinance twenty-eight thirty-six, fixing the salary ranges and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year two thousand seventeen.
Guzikowski, second.
Heard Guzikowski's second. Roll call?
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
All right, on to new business, item six is a motion to authorize the Information Technology Department to enter into an agreement with Titan Public Safety Solutions for TI-PSS court software in the amount of fifty-six thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars. It's a two-year payment program, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars in two thousand seventeen and twenty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars in two thousand eighteen. Oh, Caesar.
Oh, yes, I snuck up here while you were.
I didn't do it. Surprised me.
Uh, just a little background on this, in two thousand five and two thousand six, we, uh, purchased Phoenix CAD software package for our police and fire department. They didn't have a court package at the time, they thought they could market one, so they tried to write one. We've used it for over ten years now. It's worked, um, it has a lot of flaws in it, and they're deciding that they can't make money at the court package that they've written. So they're choosing to, uh, basically keep it as is and eventually drop it. So we're forced to look for something else. TIPS was available in two thousand five, we didn't go that route because we wanted to save money at the time. We thought we'd give this a shot. And it's been around in a lot of the, it's written specifically for Wisconsin court systems, for Wisconsin municipal courts. So we, at this point, that's the system that most courts are using. The advantage to it is that it allows you to interface and send, uh, information to the state and the federal government to try and collect, uh, fines owed through the refund, the federal refund program, which is tip, uh, trip and a few other options, cows and things like that. Uh, the judge has asked for this package, she, she, uh, presented it at the CIP and requested it. She's not here tonight because she's at court, obviously. Um, so I'm, I'm championing the cause for this one, but, uh, this is a proven software package. It is being used by most of the suburban courts in the area. And since we will be able to send the information to the state and federal governments, we're anticipating that the increased tax, uh, refunds that will be, the money that we'll be getting from refunds, uh, that individuals will not be getting, uh, will in effect pay for this package plus in the next two years. So it's actually a win for the city. It does involve new software, but it will be easier for employees to.
Finance Director Bridget?
I second everything that Caesar said, I have personal experience using the software. It is very good software, it has significant internal controls and audit trails, which, um, our existing software does not unless you wanna get into the programming side of it. So, um, in addition to having, um, cash receipt functions, which, again, our existing system didn't have, so that is another benefit in doing things in batches. So in addition to collecting more money, they will be able to be more efficient after court operations and the amount of time that they process some of those operations, which is great. This is a two-year payment plan, which means that we will have to reserve dollars out of the twenty-eighteen million dollars allocated in CIP.
Thanks for that. Any questions?
Uh, one.
Alderman Verhaelen?
If we continue, um, past the two years, um, what do you estimate the annual cost to be?
The annual cost is, is written there, basically, it's, it's, uh, ninety, well, in the first year, it's ninety-two hundred, and the second year, it's, um, support is, uh, ninety-five hundred dollars. So you're looking at ninety-five hundred plus a couple of percent each year.
As far as problems with the system, uh, as far as a lot of other municipalities and stuff using it, I, I would gather that you guys did your research, and it's something that's a lot better and more compatible.
Yes, like I said, it's, it's actually, in two thousand five, this program was around already. Uh, it was not the program it is now, obviously, didn't have all the modules and, like, the tax intercept portion wasn't there then. But this is a proven program, it's been around in cities like, uh, Wauwautosa, West Dallas, um, St. Francis, they're all using it already, so.
Anybody else? Motion?
I'll move to authorize the Information Technology Department to enter into an agreement with Titan Public Safety Solutions for court software in the amount of fifty-six thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars. It's listed in a two-year payment program, twenty-seven nine-nine-seven in two thousand seventeen, twenty-eight two-seventy-five in two thousand eighteen.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call?
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
All right, now number nine, it's a consideration of motion to approve music license agreements with SESAC, Society of European Stage Authors and Composers, BMI Broadcast Music, Inc., and ASCAP for the rebroadcast of music by licensed performers at a combined total of one thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty cents. Any questions? Motion?
I'll move to approve the music license agreements with CSAC, BMI and ASCAP for the rebroadcast of music licensed performance at a combined total of one thousand four hundred forty-one dollars eighty cents.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call?
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
We'll, uh, move item ten to right after fourteen, uh, so that takes us to, item eleven is a consideration of a motion to grant the fire department approval to apply for a safer act grant and for the council to determine the number of firefighters for which it may be applied. Fire Chief Rosenditch is here, welcome.
Thank you, uh, tonight I'm bringing forward you, uh, last year during the budget time, we had talked about the personnel and the great lengths, and Alderman Toman in the past has asked me specifically on a safer grant, which comes from Homeland Security of funding for firefighters. First, I kinda wanna bring you up to date on, on, we'll get into the chart in a minute here. As the percentage has changed over the years, when we had previously applied for this back in oh-seven, uh, we had won the award, but we were turned down, uh, just, just because the council didn't, didn't wanna spend the money at the time. But at that time, it was about funding at ninety percent. This current, uh, Homeland Security grant is funding at seventy-five percent for the first two years and thirty-five percent for the third year. So if you look at the chart, I'm, I, I broke it down into requesting from three to six people and what it would cost per year during the life of this grant if we decided to go. So just as using the three-person, that it would cost a point seven-five of a firefighter or about sixty-five thousand dollars just, just to fund the grant in the first year and the second year. And then the third year, it would go up to about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, towards the end of it. And at the end of the life afterwards, the fourth year was all on us, is three hundred thousand dollars. So the, the considering what's gonna happen, um, in the budget to, to let you know upfront what these costs are and how do you predict and how do you fund for it? Um, I, I know there's been, been thoughts for, A, the referendum, B, do we go over the expenditure restraint and just, you know, blow the wad for a year and, and then come back at it? The other option here is don't do it at all and delay it a year and, and look at it and, and see and do, you know, is, is this money, this sixty-five thousand dollars for the first two years? And that third year of, of one sixty, you know, at three or, and on the high end, uh, you know, you're, you're paying from, from, uh, one-twenty up to six hundred thousand dollars in that fourth year for the, for the wages and benefits for that, uh, for the number of firefighters. Yeah, statistics reveal that all our fire studies and all our, uh, um, ISO rating, yeah, deems we need the personnel, but the question is, how do we get there? And I wanna do it prudently, and I'm sure you do too, in the, in the fiscal restraints that we have. So that's kinda where we're sitting at, so we can do some of it, all of it, or we can do nothing and, and sit on it, so. That's kinda where we're, we're at.
Questions for the chief on the grant application, Alderman Kurkowski?
Chief, I understand that in a perfect world, if you, if you applied for six and got six, and we'd be on the hook for the payment, the salaries and stuff for those, for the six, for those three years, okay? I understand that. Come year four, um, let's just assume that there's no personnel changes in the fire department for, for three years. Then we'd be on the, we, the city would be on the hook for finding money to pay for six firefighter positions. And, and in a perfect world, as we sit here today, in four years, that money may not be there.
Right, and you gotta look at right now, what's on the books coming up that's really approved from the Drexel Development, all the Centennial Apartments, there's three thousand units coming in. So, so you, we're, you know, we're looking at three to five thousand people within this time period without any other thing coming before you.
And I, I'm just trying to.
And so the question is, yeah, how do you balance this?
Yeah, and I'm just trying to be devil's advocate because, so perhaps if we went through with this process, we would almost, quick thinking here, have to say, for the next three years, we'd almost have to have some sort of, for lack of a better word, moratorium on any new firefighter positions because we have this grant, this, this safer program going on, and, and then in year four, I, I'm looking at, I don't wanna use the word layoff, but if the money isn't.
The grant is 'cause you need the people, not 'cause you're gonna lay off other existing guys.
Well, I understand that.
You'd be going backwards to what you would be asking for.
I understand, I just don't wanna be put in a position in four years to say, well, we don't have the money now to pay these guys, so, thanks, you know, we'll see you later.
Well, in worst cases, you can lay 'em off, you know. The fourth year is on us, whatever we wanna do, so, I mean, you know, there, there, there could be an option of, of, after that fourth year that, you know, anybody retires, you may not replace them.
It's a worthwhile adventure, it just, it has a.
There, there's a lot of, of thought, both positive and negative lines.
It has a serious negative impact and if something doesn't change in four years, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Verhaelen, then Alderman Kevich.
In looking this over with, with the, uh, the three, uh, personnel additions, 'cause I, I'm of the opinion that we can't afford six and not even five, so I was looking at the three-person option myself, or nothing. But, um, the way I'm looking at it, um, I don't know if the other Aldermen are aware, but I was told by the chief that in the last couple of months, they've had the most calls ever for service. So that being said, look at the growth we're looking at here in the, in the city in the next three to five years, exponential growth with all the apartments and retail and, and other things that are coming here. But, um, when you look at putting boots on the ground, i-if we do get the safer grant, this is the cheapest way to do it. And the way I look at it, um, you have to look at the flip side of the coin, too. Uh, the more calls we get, the more calls for, um, people we're gonna have to come in and cover when, when the regular on-staff personnel can't be there, which means your overtime budgets go up. And you also have to remember that, uh, you know, with more calls, you have the potential for more injuries on the job, more workman's comp. So if we have personnel that are not able to work, our staff is gonna be even stretched even further. So the way I look at, look at it, um, you know, it's, it's the cheapest way we can put boots on the ground here. And if at the end of three years, we can't afford these people, um, you know, if you have to let 'em go, you have to let 'em go. But I, I, I sure as heck can't see where, in three years, we're not gonna need these people to stay on the, the fire department.
Alderman Kevich?
I have a couple of statements, couple of questions. First, I'll ask the questions of the chief. Chief, you're understaffed now, how many people are you legitimately short?
Right, according to the ISO, uh, in the fire department section, eighty percent of our score deficiency points was in personnel. And they figure a half person for deficiency, and we got a five and a half out of fifteen on that. So right now, we're, they're, they said we should have ten more, according to the ISO. The fire study back in, in oh-nine, back then, said we needed nine more than what we have. We haven't added, both police and fire, haven't added staff since two thousand and six. And in that meantime, we've had over five hundred, roughly about five hundred million dollars in construction and over four hundred and twenty-five more buildings that we either have to, to know what, know what's going on or in, from fire inspections to just the residential aspect or multifamily. So, you know, there's a lot of diversity into that, and we're doing more fire inspections than ever.
And then secondly, how many guys on your force, you included, are eligible for retirement in the next? How many years is this plan for?
I'd say, just a quick guess, is at least six.
At least six.
Yeah.
It, it's my opinion, we should look hard at this, this is federal money, this is our money coming back to our community. I think we should bring it in, I think we should man it, we're thirty-five thousand and growing. We constantly add property and value to the city. We're adding employees to this city that are also gonna need care, not just, not just those that live here, but those that work and play also need the protection. I think, I think we take advantage of the three-year, uh, we man it up as much as we can. And, um, by the second year, we come up with a proactive plan to, uh, pay for these people once we're in the fourth year, so.
Okay. Anything else, Alderman Toman?
Actually, we, as far as the need goes, we've already had this discussion. We had it at budget last year, we had it, uh, we've had it in personnel. Uh, how many requests for personnel were there overall in the city, like nine or ten? How many requests for personnel were there overall in the city, like nine or 10? Well, whatever, I mean, every one was approved at the personnel level, and most of the council members were on board, with the exception of one position, if you remember right. Okay, so now here we're faced with, you know, Alderman Verhalen hit it right on the head, here's a way to get there with extra people, and why not use the money? And number two, I mean, if you go for the three or six, I mean, I support the three level right now, that doesn't say we have to spend the money. You apply for the grant, it comes back, and the council gets another kick at the end.
Right, and that's how we did it previously, we applied for it, accepted, decided, is this the way to move forward?
To me, it's a no-brainer. You look at it again, if you get the grant, and then you decide from there. You go for it now, we need it in this city, the need is there, and I think most of us are on board with that.
Yeah, well said, Alderman Toman. And just as an aside, if anyone doesn't think our public safety folks are doing an exemplary job, the 2006 number since the last new hires, with all the additional calls for service, all the new development, all the new traffic stuff, I mean, it's clear that you guys have stepped up.
And as a caveat to that, the 2006 hires were we energy subsidies. So there's another chance for a subsidy for the support of personnel.
Absolutely. Anything else? Alderman Gale?
Yeah, Tom, you know, you've been in these sessions for a long time in contract, and we're going to have a contract expiring with you, your staff, end of this year. And we have made it a paramount concern moving forward that we couch staff additions with flex language.
Right, right, and that's, that'll be on the table, and that, I'm sure that's part of this whole process.
So, you know, timing of these grant approvals and hirings, you know, somehow, and, you know, the last negotiation carried on for almost two years.
Right, right.
So, I mean, we're talking, we're going to be at the end of the grant cycle by the time we get a contract if that timeline plays out. So that gives me a little pause for concern, a little pause for concern, so to speak. But, you know, federal money, as Dan said, or Mark, and it's a good way to get a head start on this, and we can figure this out, how we're going to fund it as we move forward. And in fact, we decide that, you know, when you get, if you get your grant approved, we're going to move forward, we'll take a whack at it then and figure out how to do it. But I think getting in the stream and applying for it now is a good, right, thing to do.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion?
Bukavich will make a motion to approve, to move to grant the fire department approval to apply for the safer act grant, and for the council to determine the number of firefighters for which it may be applied in February.
You have to set a number.
I would need it now, because the grant opened last week already, and it closes February 10th. So, yeah, we're in a crunch time, so...
I heard three from the majority.
That would be part of the motion, what we need to motion.
So make the motion as you wish.
Can I interject?
Go ahead, Alderman Kerkowski.
I think it was made earlier, you could ask for six, but you could, you could come back and say, "We only really want three."
I would say that, this grant is every year, I would say, you know, with the times that we're in, my recommendation was stick with the three.
Okay.
I'd love to have, I'd love to have six, you know, but it's-
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll amend that motion to include the number of firefighters to stand and apply for three.
Verhalen, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
All right, under Streets, Parks and Forestry, item 12 is a consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of a 2016 Schors A9 sweeper on a Kenworth K370 chassis from Arnau Inc. in the amount of $240,029.50. Streets guy is here, Ted Johnson, how are you?
Yeah, thank you. We all went through CIP with us, and, or CEP, excuse me, and we all saw the need for a new street sweeper. Our current sweeper is 17 years old. Typically, you like to turn those around about every 10 years. We've gotten 17 out of ours, so we do think that we've gotten good use out of it. We considered putting this out to bid, after demoing some of the units, we started talking to some of the manufacturer's reps, and we felt that we could probably get a nicer unit than we could maybe afford with our current budget by trying to buy out one of, one of the demo units that they were running. We actually demoed six different sweepers from five major manufacturers. We had a committee that was made up of all of our sweeper drivers. They evaluated, I think they did a very good job evaluating them, and doing all the pros and cons. We actually liked the, we have a Timco currently, which has served us very well. That was one of the, actually, we demoed two of the Timcos. We liked the Schors the best. I think one of the reasons, like, our second pick was the Johnson. I think one of the reasons, even the difference in the $4,000 is the chassis and the truck itself. The Schors is sitting on a Ken, is sitting on a Kenworth, which is considerably more expensive than an International or a Freightliner. Very nice unit, we felt that was well worth the few extra dollars. And if you look at what the list price for all of the items that were actually on there, I guess that's looking at manufacturer suggested retail, but we could have never afforded that within our budget. So we do feel as if we're getting a very good bang for our buck. We don't plan on taking delivery of this until late March, so we'll be able to build up some of that fund, and we'll be able to hit the streets with it when, right when we need it in the spring this year.
Just to show proper respect, your official title is Director of Streets, Parks and Forestry. I think, right?
Correct. Did I, did I say it wrong?
No, I didn't show proper decorum, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
That's all right. Questions for Ted?
Just comment- Alderman Gale? Sorry, just commented, appreciate you taking a good-hearted look at getting good value for the city. I know that keeping it under budget was a strong priority, and this is the first of a two-vehicle package, my recollection, so, one this year, one next year, if I remember right?
Correct, we will be looking at one for next year.
Funded out of stormwater fees. Stormwater fee went up four bucks, so that's where, that's where that's going to go. But I think it was 250 was the number we were looking at from a budget, right?
Yep.
So, great, appreciate the due diligence, good work.
Anyone else?
Good job.
Motion?
Gale, move to approve the purchase of a 2016 Schors A9 sweeper on a Kenworth K370 chassis from Arnau Inc. in the amount of $240,029.50.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Under Community Development, item 13 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11787-011717, Designating the Public Right-of-Way Adjacent to the Property at 2200 West Drexel Avenue as South IKEA Way, it's in the 2nd District, Doug?
Thank you, back in 2012, the council approved a series of CSMs that re-divided the properties adjacent to the Forest Ridge Elementary School, and as properties owned by Northwestern Mutual that later became the IKEA Development. And as part of those CSMs, right-of-way for a future street extension was dedicated. In addition to that, as part of our agreements with the county, there was an easement granted for a, an easement granted that would allow the extension of that, that right-of-way to service the IKEA property, and also to serve as the basis for an extension of that entire street through 227th Street at its intersection with Northwestern Mutual Way. This would officially name that street, which here to date has no name, and it was just something in, as part of our negotiations with IKEA, they have indicated a desire to have that street name, and it's something that the city has looked favorably upon. This resolution would memorialize that and officially name that street South IKEA Way.
Okay, questions for Doug?
Yeah, I do.
Alderman Verhalen?
One question, Doug, in the Phase Two of that street extension, where it's going to go back out to 27th Street, are there any other side streets or anything coming off of that, the end of what will be IKEA Way, where it's going to be actually a separate street in a T-intersection? Or how's that going to be configured?
Yeah, there likely will, but at that point, where it makes that turn to the west, it will probably assume the name of Northwestern Mutual Way to coincide with what happens on the west side of 27th. So at that point, it'd be, whereas IKEA Way is a north-south street, that future street would be east-west, would have its own name and address range, and any public streets, or private for that matter, that would take access would have their own street and address range.
Right, well, the reason I ask the question is, not that it's, not that it's really important, but when you have a street that starts out at the beginning, it's 20th Street, you get a block down and it changes names, and then you get a block further down and it changes names again, tends to be quite confusing. So I'm kind of wondering if it would be better either to leave the whole street as 20th Street, which IKEA wouldn't really care to do, but maybe we should look at naming that whole street from its beginning at Drexel Avenue, name the whole length of the street IKEA Way. Because it, like I said, it will tend to be confusing for somebody that comes from out of town, if there's other develops and stuff down there. You know, you turn on the 20th Street, and then you get a block down, and it's not 20th Street anymore, it's something else. And then if you come in from the other way, and you're looking for 20th, it's IKEA Way.
I think that's one of the reasons why this makes some sense, is that, I mean, the people who will be coming into the community could identify with that street name and know exactly where they're going, yes, this is where I turn to get to IKEA, as well as a number of other things. I mean, the situation that you mentioned with the disjointed street names already exists, actually, with South 20th Street. With South 20th Street in that location is actually a dead end. Yet there are other locations named South 20th Street in the Cityville Creek, so we already have probably two or three different sections of 20th Street which aren't connected. We, not an ideal situation, but I think certainly in this sense, in this case, it makes some sense to identify that segment of the road with the major user. Certainly, the discretion of the common council has, how do you want to proceed? But I think that, regardless, I think we're going to have to have some signage that, just so we don't have those instances where people make a wrong turn trying to get to IKEA, and hopefully making a left on the 20th Street, which had the potential, I mean, if you were to extend that south of Drexel Avenue. So I guess I wouldn't necessarily be in support of extending the IKEA Way name any further. Certainly, it's the council's discretion, what they want to do with the 20th Street name, if they want to extend that to the north. But the proposal at this point is for South IKEA Way.
Other questions or comments? Alderman Gale?
I just, I think, especially school district stuff, I think they'd probably prefer not to have us authorize a change of address on their school. I think just leaving it as it's kind of laid out, but the little segment, IKEA Way is... Be with the westbound side of that when it comes to tuition.
Anybody else? Motion?
Bukavich will move to adopt Resolution Number 11787-011717, Designating the Public Right-of-Way, the adjacent, the Public Right-of-Way adjacent to the property at 2200 West Drexel Avenue as South IKEA Way.
Second?
Alderman Gale, seconds, roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Under Engineering, item 14 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11766-011717, Accepting the Workmanship and Authorizing Final Payments to Wilcom Excavating and Grading. This project involved the installation of street improvements in Lake Vista. It's Project Number 14024 in the 4th District, City Engineer Mike Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the closeout for the Lake Vista Parkway roadway, which was constructed primarily through the year 2015. Remained open while some punchless items were completed and final quantities calculated. Final payment then would be just under $23,000, as listed on the report. This was a, what I think many would consider a very successful project, a really beautiful scenic drive across the redeveloping properties, one side of which is the current construction site for the Lake Vista Park. Project had some challenges, working under some very tight environmental controls. In the end, it is a project of a brand-new roadway, just under one mile in length, also about 3/4 of a mile of multi-use pathways, which will be added on to with the current park project. Also, with this project was the first phase of sanitary sewer and water utilities installed. So basically, this is the backbone of the redeveloping properties to accommodate the park and a future development of the vacant lands adjacent. Provides great views, bluffed-out views for the public. This being a unit-priced contract, the final payout would be around $2.54 million. It was awarded at $2.45 million, so about $3.66 over the awarded bid. About half of that was brought back by a payment of the adjacent property owner that paid in their fair share of us working through their contaminated soils in sanitary sewer installation. So in the end, we are less than 2% over the awarded bid, so feel pretty good about that on a project of this size.
Yeah, questions? Alderman Toman?
See, the lighting was the main issue on the overrun, like, a couple of-
There was an item, and that was a miscalculation on the cabling quantity, so we had to pay the full, we, it was calculated as a single-wire system, it was actually three wires, so that was one of the overages. If you look through the list, we took ahead on some items of work, made it up on some others. So in the end, we were, you know, fairly close to the award.
Anyone else? Motion on 14.
Toman will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11766, Accepting the Workmanship and Authorizing Final Payment to Wilcom Excavating and Grading. This project involved the installation of street improvements in Lake Vista.
Mr. Kozak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Moving back to item 10, it's a consideration of a motion to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $362,059.96, and 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $617,594.4 for a combined total of $979,650. Bridgette, can answer any questions? Not seeing any buttons pushed. Motion?
Gale, move to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $362,059.96, and the 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $617,594.4 for a combined total of $979,650.
Mr. Kozak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Licensing, I'll hand off to Alderman Kerkowski, item 15.
License Committee met on January 12, 2017, minutes are attached. Recommendations are as follows, item 17, Kerkowski make a motion to deny an operator's license to Tyler Dragoo, 263 East Pine Hollow Lane, Oak Creek, for conviction of a controlled substance and falsification of application.
Gale, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
16.
Kerkowski make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the renewal adult entertainment business license for the 2017 licensing year for SJB LLC, Stephanie Higgins, Agent DBA, The New Spice II, 7070, South 27th Street, and to refund the 2017 license fee paid.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
17.
Kerkowski make a motion to grant an operator's license to the five individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Kerkowski. Item 18 is a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.851E, to discuss the terms of a finance development agreement with Emerald Row LLC for TIF loan and grant assistance for Phase Two of the Emerald Row Development. Alderman Gale?
Gale, move to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85 Sub-1, to discuss the terms of a finance development agreement with Emerald Row LLC for TIF loan and grant assistance for Phase Two of the Emerald Row Development.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale. Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.